...to take the full time, so if they want to keep it brief then we'll like them a lot more, I'm sure. So, that's pretty much it. We've got six main questions. If it does go a little shorter, if the answers are a little shorter, there's some extra questions that we might get into. I believe the committee started off with like thirty-five questions and they kind of whittled it down to the six that they thought everybody would be the most interested in finding out with the candidates. So, I guess without further ado, let's go ahead and get started. Mr. Mink, would you go?
I'm Darryl Mink, and I've lived in Ardmore for about twenty-five, six years, operating businesses ever since I've been here. I raised my family here. I've got two daughters and five granddaughters, or five grandchildren, three granddaughters and two grandsons. One's about to graduate high school, so... I saw this in the paper where the seat had been vacated, or he was going to vacate the seat, and I had thought of several things, and there had been some comments made about the simple fact of people asking questions and wanting to know more about their city and how things are going on with the tax dollars they're acquiring. And it got me interested that, you know, it's time to step up, and if the people, the citizens, would let me, I would gladly serve this position. I hope to accomplish one thing, and that is to get our people in this city excited about our government, not just our local government, but our entire government. If we, basically, I think, have almost lost our government, so it's time for we, the people, to make a stand and let our voices be heard on a local level, so that we can grow that voice, so that maybe one day in the future, we'd have a chance to recapture our government and get Washington to listen. Thank you.
All right, now, this is Doug Fow.
My name's Doug Fow. I'll tell you a little bit about myself. I moved to Ardmore in the middle of my sophomore year in high school, and I wasn't real excited about it. My parents had moved us from Amarillo, which was a much bigger town. There was much more to do, I thought, more going on, and boy, was I wrong. I met and married my high school sweetheart, Paula Upchurch. I don't know if you know her family, they've been here forever, and it's just been amazing. Growing up in Ardmore was an amazing place to be. Went away to college, started working in the restaurant business. My wife got her RN and started working at Children's Hospital, and lo and behold, we became pregnant with our twin daughter, Stacey and Savannah. At that point that we realized Oklahoma City was fun, but the best place to raise a family was Ardmore, and so we moved back here, and we've been blessed ever since. Our children went through, went to Oakall, went to Charles Evans, went to Ardmore Middle School, and then went to Ardmore High School, and they graduated last year, and they were both valedictorians, so we're really proud of who they are and what they are. They've gone now on to college, at Southwestern College in Winfield, Kansas, where they both have tennis scholarships, and so it's been really cool. What was really great about also being back here is that my brother moved back to Ardmore. He was in between jobs, came back to Ardmore to find some stuff, and my mother introduced him to his future wife, who was Jessica, and so now, lo and behold, there's more family in Ardmore for us than the girls. And then my sister moved back. She had met a young man coming home at Christmas time, his name was Todd Jaeger, and they got married, and so we just have a whole bunch of family here. When my daughters would play basketball as children, there were sixteen people in the stands cheering just for them. It was just amazing. But like Darryl said, Ardmore is an amazing place, but we don't have a whole lot of community involvement. There are 25,000 people, give or take, in Ardmore. I think probably 1,100 to 1,500 people will decide the race between Darryl and I, and that's pretty sad. We're a big town, we don't have a lot to draw for this election because it's just the two of us. It's just a general election because there were just the two of us, so there's no primary to get more people involved. So really, what I would love is for people to just go out and get more people to come vote. We have lots of precincts all over the town, and people need to come out and get involved. I guess really that's a lot about me. We have these questions that we'll go through, and you'll learn a little bit more about what I think and what I do. I work for Dollar General, I've been with them for about nine years. Before that, I was with Circuit City, kind of saw the writing on the wall there and got out in the nick of time before they closed their doors. But I'll talk a little bit more about Dollar General because they're part of one of my answers. And I was given the two-minute warning, which means I can keep talking for a little while, but I'm going to go ahead and stop. What city council decision in recent years did I most agree with? Probably the most recent decision was that they agreed to give money to the University Center for the construction of the new campus. This is a really big deal. It's a long-term investment for our future of Ardmore and for Carter County as a whole. What decision did I disagree with the most? This one was probably about ten months ago. I was actually at the commission meeting when this was decided, it was actually a three-to-two split. It was when they decided, I'm sorry, was not to change the charter of the Ardmore Development Authority to allow at least a minority of its board to live outside of the limits. Many of the trusts of the city of Ardmore, like the Main Street Authority, have already been changed to allow those that own businesses or work in Ardmore to be eligible to serve on its board. Economic development does not stop at the city limits. Some of our most talented leaders live just outside Ardmore. Ardmore's population is around 25,000, like I said earlier, but during the week it grows to nearly 40,000. These people come to town to work and are truly vested in the city of Ardmore. They want what the residents of Ardmore want and deserve the opportunity to be appointed to these trusts. As a city commissioner, it is imperative that when we appoint people to the trust of the city of Ardmore, that those people have great integrity and are considered above reproach.
I think the one thing that I disagreed with lately, and this has been recent, you know, it talks about it in some of the questions in the future here that we're going to go through, about empty buildings and things. I think that the city needs to get behind and back the people that have been in business for a long period of time here, that they've drawn tax dollars for the city and they've been a great part of it. Recently, the Body Shop deal, and I disagreed with it. The gentleman was trying to improve his business, and he brought, he was buying a building next to the sauna. I disagreed with their decision to not let him go in, because according to the standards that are set by the planning commission, he went through the planning commission and it was approved by them, went to the city commission. I think that business owners need the support more than what I've seen in my years when I was at Daylight Donuts. The city don't get behind the old-time businesses, it seems like sometimes, because we need just as much support as the new ones that they're trying to draw in, in order to exist. And when a businessman of twenty years or more tries to enlarge his business and bring it up, I would like to see more backing for those businesses. The one thing that I was really proud of is the fact, the two things, there was a church, certain churches tried to go in in an area, and it was the people that lived around it that got to vote. They voted against it because in the area that they lived in, they just, they moved out there in an area that they didn't want that church in that area. That's their right. They've invested, bought those properties, and so when they came to the city and said, "We do not want this church to go here because we just don't, we don't want a church in our neighborhood," the city went and looked into it, and they backed their decision. They went with the homeowners and the property owners, and I think that shows good stroke for the city. The other thing is, they made a decision in one of the recent meetings that I was at, where they had brought in a new company that would take over a huge loan that the city has. When they put in the new sewer and water facilities, they took out a huge loan. They, they, excuse me, they voted to get this other loan in, and when they did, it ended up saving the city like a million too. And so I think as long as we're looking out for our dollars, we're winning.
Second question, we're going to start off with you, Mr. Mink. How do you feel about the city of Ardmore paying thousands of dollars in severance pay when an employee is terminated, such as the prior police chief and more recently, the HR director?
That's going to be real easy. I totally disagree. I don't believe that, I think that if we make a contract with somebody, that we need to stand by. And I believe in both these issues, from what I've seen, and I don't know the whole story, but from what I've seen, we had a contract in place, that if there was a resignation and they falsified something, they got nothing. Why they got it done, I'm amazed, and I disagree with it entirely. But here again, I wasn't on the council, I don't know what they were looking at. It's as simple as when I had a dumb job. When I would hire somebody, I would bring them in, I would tell them what their job responsibilities are, what times they would go to work, and what days they would work. And when they would look at it and they would read and understand, "This is what I expect out of you for the job," and then I would have them sign that agreement, because I never fired one person. I never fired anybody. Because when they broke that contract, when they violated, didn't show up for work, didn't do their job, they broke the contract, I'd bring them in and I'd sit them down and say, "Well, you know, you realize you fired yourself. You're not going to be able to work here anymore," because a contract is abiding, you signed it, I signed it, and it's that simple. So I disagree totally with that.
Mr. Fow?
I guess my job as city commissioner would be to ensure that the decisions surrounding resignation and/or termination of an employee is conducted in a fair, legal, and consistent manner. Not knowing the terms of this employment, it's hard to speak to the outcome. I do think sometimes a severance package is a money saver rather than an expense, due to negotiations that may deter or prohibit legal issues. Now, having said that, the paper stated just the other day that we have had five HR managers in the last ten years. This seems a little excessive. I would be interested to know what the turnover for staff is in other communities of our size, to see if it's common or something we need to look into. It seems pretty excessive that we would have that much turnover going on in those positions. Thank you.
Mr. Mink, would you like a minute for rebuttal?
Well, I'd just like to reiterate the fact that a contract, if we get into a contract, it should be binding. The only thing that's wrong, if we have to void our contract or not use our contract, then evidently we didn't do a good enough job, as Doug just mentioned. We didn't do a good enough job finding the right person for the job. And if you're going to give somebody a good severance package like that, then I would hope that they are very eligible for the job and can do the job for us.
All right. Third question. There are many former schools and businesses in Ardmore that sit vacant, that continue to crumble and decay, will eventually need to be dealt with. What do you suggest be done with these structures while protecting property owners' rights?
Is my turn now?
Yes. Thank you for keeping track.
No problem. Right now, I serve on the executive board of the Main Street Authority, so I'm really at home with this whole crumbling building issue. We have several crumbling buildings in town. We are fortunate that some people have done some really great things lately, like Hyacinth Landgraph took down a crumbling building and are putting up a new building on Main Street, it's going to be great. The Noble Foundation, or Samudan Noble is taking, Noble Energy is taking down a building on Main Street so that they can bridge that with their campus on Broadway, and that's a really good thing. But with so many business growth downtown, I think these other buildings are kind of an eyesore, and they're embarrassing to Ardmore. If you listen to people from the ADA talk about bringing people to Ardmore and showing them Ardmore, some of Main Street it's hard for them to show, because it's boarded up and it doesn't look good. And I'm really not sure what the city can do about them. I would be interested in speaking to the developmental services and finding out what existing ordinances and codes we have for property owners, and possibly the consideration of new ones that will address these issues. I know one of the problems we have found on Main Street Board is a lot of our property owners do not live in Ardmore or the surrounding area. The other day I found out the man that owns what used to be the Jim Tees Building, and if you've been driven, driving by it, where the beautiful, what used to be beautiful mural on the side is falling, about to fall over into the road. He actually lives like in Azerbaijan or something like that. He doesn't live in this area, so how do you get people like that to hold them accountable to what we need? We really need to take a look at developmental services, find out what the codes are, what we can do besides just making sure people mow the grass, but what we can do to make sure that they keep their buildings appropriate and look good. When people drive down our Main Street, it says a lot about our community, and it's very important that it all looks good. Thank you.
Mr. Mink?
Well, as far as that, I believe that there are codes enforced, hopefully that will take care of it. If a property owner has totally neglected something that they have, that they can be told by the city to take care of it. But I'm not for a big government. I'm not for a lot of government coming in and telling me what I got to do. As long as I can keep my grass mowed and keep the thing looking decent, maybe, who knows? Maybe, these are tough times. Maybe they're trying to build enough money to redo and these structures and build them up to where that they would be a nice visual approach for the city. But I think too many times, if it, if the city gets involved in our business too much, they're kind of like our government, they just overstep their bounds. There's a place for them, you have codes enforced, and if they're abiding by those codes, give them the time to redo their buildings.
Doug rebuttal? Mr. Mink, do you have anything else?
No.
All right. Fourth question here. Where is the first place, if any, you will attempt to cut spending if you were elected?
Well, there are, here again, I'm trying to understand and read some of the issues that go along with being a city councilman. You're not as big as I originally thought you are. You've, there's only so much you can do as far as policies and things as what you set, and so as a one voice, you can put policies in, if the other commissioners would agree, then you might get something done in that area. I think that, I think I lost my train of thought, had somewhere to go and then lost The problem with the spending, I see a lot of waste, like everybody else does. If we have a, and we've got some old water lines, we need to fix these water lines so they don't break so often, dig up the roads, fix them, haul in gravel. I've, and on the street near my house, there was a three-month period where it took three months that we drove through ruts, and Sunset was a street, so that should be taken care of. It's a busy street. But I think that we need to look into, how much are we, do we not have enough money to jump in and fix these hurriedly, so that the people, the citizens, don't have to suffer the shocks being replaced and different things like that? I just think that we need to look into replacing these water lines, sewer lines, whatever, and if we have to go, I mean, I hate to borrow money, but whatever we've got to do to make this city function and grow and be able to be a good place for people to look at for bringing in their businesses.
So the question is, where's the first place, if any, you will attempt to cut spending if you are elected? Honestly, I'm not sure. As a city commissioner, I feel it's my priority to make sure the city government runs well, efficiently, and with sufficient income to meet the needs of the city and those living in Ardmore. If I ever saw or learned of areas that were not running efficiently, then I would be very interested in remedying those solutions, those situations, I'm sorry. The remedy may or may not include reduced spending, but again, it goes back to that priority of making sure the city is managed well, invested in the future, and the city government runs sufficiently, smoothly, and effectively. Thank you.
Mr. Mink rebuttal? All right. The fifth question. What are the three most important problems confronting Ardmore? Please list them in order of priority, and very briefly describe how you would attempt to solve your highest priority.
Well, three was tough. There are lots of issues that we have out there, but the first one that came to mind that seemed to be the biggest problem is the drug problem that we have in Ardmore. Being on I-35, we are a prime location for people to distribute drugs, throw drugs, deliver them, do whatever they wanted to. I think it's really important that we take a public campaign to inform everyone that trafficking drugs is not tolerated in Ardmore. And with our new police chief and his impressive bragging on drugs, we will continue the fight until the problem is resolved. The other problem we have in Ardmore is education. The company I worked for, Dollar General, I think you've probably seen a little bit about them in the paper lately, have a huge literacy initiative going. They're very, very involved in the schools. When they came and did studies of Ardmore, they realized that of Ardmore City's schools, the kids that go to Ardmore, 20% of them go home and don't have a parent who has a high school diploma or a GED. So for them to continue learning is hard. What they did was they brought in six other foundations, like the Barbara Bush Foundation and the Pearl Literacy Foundation and the American Library, and they have helped to build things and make things better. One of the things they did just recently that was in the paper was the Barbara Bush Foundation graduated four adults with their GED, people who wouldn't have that unless that foundation had come to town and made things better. This will help us as a community, it will help us grow further in education. I know that higher education is also a big priority here. I was at a manufacturing and distribution dinner not too long ago, and we talked a lot about the employable workforce in Ardmore, the people that we need in our jobs, some engineers, some laborers, just different things that we needed, and this will help us sustain that and make it much better. The other problem Darryl touched on, which is infrastructure. We've worked, I think all of you have had to reroute or go around, have worked very hard on our infrastructure, but it's still a big problem. We have old water lines, we have old sewer lines, and we need to get them all fixed. I know there's a plan in place, but like Darryl said, we need to make sure that those people are held accountable and those things get done in a timely manner. And those are the three problems. I could go into housing and all the kinds of other stuff, but I'm done.
Pretty much in agreement. I understand that the infrastructure, that there are some water lines and sewer lines in this city that I was shocked to learn are 100 years old. I can't imagine that. You know, and it reminds me of some of the schools deteriorating to the point that they had to tear them down. When we have stuff, we need to manage them. We need to, when the water lines and sewer lines come to a point where we're having problems, we need to address that. We need to find the money, the resources, to put in new water lines and sewer lines. I know they've been very good about, you know, water not being off for long periods of time and the houses not being without, but that's one of the things, the pet peeves is taking care of our sewer lines and water lines so that we don't have those problems in the future, and not let them get 100 years old before we replace them. Again, we've put a new chief in place, and I think that was a great move, and I think the only thing that we can do now is get behind him, because he's shown to be very informed about how to handle problems, and I think the best thing we can do is give him all the tools that's necessary that we can afford to back him to drive these drug problems out of here. Just because we live on an interstate doesn't mean they're welcome, and there needs to be a sign that shows that whether we know, that they know they're not welcome here. And the only way we can improve our education for our kids is to stop that, deter that, so that their parents can grow up to be high school educated people. The other thing I think we need is education. I think if we had, and I know it's crazy, but if we had a college, something to bring in, I fought for years to get good employees, people that will stay on job and do their job, and I think if we had some kind of education or a way to bring education in here, we would bring in new jobs and train people for the future so that they can run our city better.
Number six. What is your position on eminent domain or the taking of private property for public use? Doug, it's your turn. Oh, Darryl, I'm sorry, you're up.
Well, if a person acquires property, and they own, and they're paying taxes on it, eminent domain to me really doesn't need to be done. If you own property and I need it, if I can't convince you that my need is greater than yours, I don't need it. I believe you work hard for your property and you acquire it and you pay your taxes, and if you could come up with an amount of money or whatever to persuade me that you need it worse than I do, there wouldn't be any need for eminent domain. And if you came in to get my property and I needed it and I felt I needed it and I wasn't being given the right amount for what I've put into that property, I think I might find it. So eminent domain to me is just, it's a real, I've seen some people lose their properties for not really good reasons, and so I'm pretty much against that.
I like Darryl M. against people losing their property for no big reason, but eminent domain is a law. It's a very clear law. It states very evidently what it's there for. It has become very, very limited, but it is still there for a reason. I don't feel people should lose their property. I don't feel people that work hard for their property should lose their property, but eminent domain is a law. If there are reasons for it, then there are reasons for it. If things can't be worked out, then they can't be worked out, but it's there for a reason. Thank you.
Darryl rebuttal? I'm going to have to rebut that.
Yeah, it's a, I understand it's a law, and somebody feels a need for that piece of property, but is it a greater need than you convince the landowner that he don't need? So I just don't, I think that's, again, too much government. You get too big and you think you want, you've got a better idea than I do? I'm against that. I think you need to reconsider and move somewhere else.
All right. Number seven here. If you were elected, would you support a change in the charter or term limits, why or why not? Doug, your turn.
Now, these latter questions I got a little shorter on, so my questions will be much more precise. I'm not really sure what the charter says now, but term limits are always helpful in bringing new people and new ideas like us. It's also important that terms should be long enough, though, for commissioners to learn and be involved, because institutional knowledge becomes very helpful. And what I mean by that is, you know, if we're only elected for a year, it's hard for us to kind of get our feet wet and understand everything that we're having to do. So it's good for people to be there for a term or so. But like anything, all the seats, I think the seats are three-year terms for the city commission, so they all come up for your election, and anybody who wants to get involved can. Thank you.
If we would have had to rent the convention center, I'd be all for that, and I'm all for those term limits. I mean, I think that once you get to a point, you fail to do as much good. You looked at things and you've kind of got in a rhythm and you're not really opening your eyes to everything that's going on around you. So I think that term limits would be good, but until we get our community involved, and we have to rent a convention center to have a debate on two gentlemen that's trying to do something for the city, it's going to be dangerous, and we're probably not going to have, we're not going to have a ability to do that. But if we, the people, ever step up and get involved in their city and their community and their children, yes, term limits would be a great deal.
Doug rebuttal? All right. Would you be in favor of expanding the city limits for the purpose of collecting taxes from new businesses? Why or why not?
Today, I don't think so. I think it would cost us too much money that we don't have. We're paying bills and things that, uh, like the sewer and the water and, uh, bringing the freshwater sources in, back in here to secure that. We spend a lot of money on things like that. I don't think that we would get enough gain in tax dollars by expanding the city limits right now. If, uh, if, if there was a need that I don't know about, because, you know, a, a lot of things, and not being in the City Commission, you don't know what's, what's trying to come to the city. But if there was a, a great need for, uh, more room, then I'd be all for it. I wouldn't have a problem with getting bigger, because I noticed when I was looking at an overall map of the city limits of Ardmore and, and how far it goes to the south and the east, west, north, it, uh, it's, it's fairly large, and I don't see anything out there that we're missing by being the size that we are today. In the future, might be a good idea, but today I don't think we need to. I think it'd cost us too much money.
I pretty much agree with Daryl. It really depends on what the business is and where it's located. I mean, what kind of tax dollars are we talking about? But you have to take into account the resources that it's gonna take to do it. What's it gonna take from us to actually incorporate that into our city limits? What resources are we gonna have to give them from, from where we are as a city and, and what can we afford to do? So it really just depends on what the business is and where it's located.
Daryl, would you like a little bit? All right. Will you be a watchdog for the taxpayers' money and resist pressure from special interests?
Yes, yes, yes. Um, a City Commissioner is a public servant. I will take that seriously, and I understand that it means I must always look out for the best for Ardmore and all its citizens. Um, I talked a little while ago about my family. Um, my wife and my sister-in-law are very involved in the senior community. Uh, my father has been the Director of the Ministry of Music at the Methodist Church for 25 years, so I'm very involved in church. Uh, my children being in education and my wife and I growing up and graduating from Ardmore, education is very, very important. Uh, my brother-in-law is in the oil and gas industry. My sister and my brother are small business people. Um, so it's very important to me that we take care of things and, and that we watch, that we watch the way we're supposed to. Thank you.
If the people chose to elect me, I would probably be the worst enemy at City Hall for a while. The dollars, I mean, we're, you know, the way our, our house runs, and, and if you know me in town, people that do know me, they say I'm kinda tight. I mean, in order to make a dollar go, I grew up dirt poor, never had a dime to my name, and, uh, it was, it was something to get money. And when you get money, you save it and you hang on to it. When you spend it, you research the heck out of it to make sure that's what you need to do. At our house, you know, and, and I'm sure everybody here does too, you're on a, on a, on an email. You get an email that tells you when, when the, when the peak time is, when it's gonna cost you like 70 cents a, a kilowatt hour to, uh, run your air conditioner. Turn that thing down, you know? There's always places to save money. You just gotta look. And in the city, I believe that, uh, it, it, we've, we've, we've got, I'll get in there and I'll look and I'll find out where the money's going. And, and here again, I'm kinda overstepping my bounds, because a City Commissioner is not really made to do that. I can say, I believe, and I'm, I'm not get educated, but I believe you can say what you'd like to see done. I can say I'd like for you to look at the expenditures on, on different things that you're, the way you're spending money in, in town, but that's the city managers or whatever job to do that. But I will be watching, just like I do mine. Thank you.
Okay. I do think there are probably some guidelines for the City Commissioners, but I think it's really important for City Commissioners to be involved. I think it's really important for the City Commissioners to go visit the firemen and see what they do and see what their needs are and to see if there's anything loose out there that they can take care of. I think it's important for them to spend time with the police officers. As a City Commission, as a City Commissioner, it's important to be very involved in the city, to be involved in all that it does and to be part of all that it does so that you can see what's going on and where the money's going. Thank you.
All right. What is your position on remote ticketing or digital citations that are sent through the mail to citizens who were not cited in person by an officer?
Done at six, but, uh, boy, here again, I'm, I'm against that. I, I don't think, I think if you caught me speeding and you caught me running a stop sign, you need to walk up to my car and give me a ticket. I think there's too many, um, places for error and stuff like that. I mean, uh, I, I, I think that that's the reason why we have a police force, and, uh, here again, I think it's too much government. It's getting into our, our business too much, and, uh, you know, use the resources you have to, to slow down the people, and, and I've never seen anybody run a stop sign more than I've seen in Ardmore. I think we can do that. So I think if you're sitting in the right corner, it's gonna be real easy for you to catch the people that do that, so, uh, I'm against that.
From what I've read, I didn't know a whole lot about this, so, you know, thanks to Google, looked up some stuff. I think from what I've read, it's a, it's a efficient means of collecting fines for breaking the law. But I would need to do research into it to understand the impact it would have on our community and our law enforcement. Does it make things better? Are there issues with it? If you're not driving the car, who gets the ticket if it's your car? You know? Lots of questions like that would need to be answered. But if it helps law enforcement and the city of Ardmore, it's probably something we should look into. Um, you know, of course, then you have to go on, do we have the money for it and all that sort of thing, but from what I read, it's a pretty neat thing, but if it's not gonna help us by any means and it doesn't look like the bugs have been worked out of it yet, there are still some answers to be, some questions to be answered. Thank you.
Daryl?
No.
All right.
That's it. Thank you, guys. (APPLAUSE)